Everyone, to the Bennington Select Board meeting of Monday, January 10th, we are at the Bennington Fire Facility. I am Jeanne Jenkins, Chair of this board, and I'll ask my fellow board members to introduce themselves, starting with Tom.
Hi, Tom Haley, good evening.
Good evening, Jim Carroll.
Hi, I'm Jean Conner, and I just want to mention, in case my phone rings, I normally don't even bring my phone to meetings, but I'm having a bit of a family medical emergency, so if my phone rings, I, depending on who it is, if it's spam, I won't answer it, but I will be answering my phone, so my apologies if that happens.
Okay. Bruce Lee Clark, I have no explanation.
All right, and Sarah, would you, we have Sarah on the screen tonight, would you like to introduce yourself?
Yes, hi, Sarah Perrin, I'm remote today.
Thank you very much. Also with us, we have at the tables Stu Hurd, who is our Town Manager, we have Nancy Lively, who takes excellent minutes for us, and we have Jim Vires on the camera for CAT TV, which is wonderful. Please note that this is unusual, but we have moved the public comment to number nine on this because, in deference to the large number of guests that we have tonight, but we will get to you, and as usual, if you have any questions, as we go through the agenda, you are very welcome to ask those. This is a very information-heavy evening, we are looking at a lot of financials and economic development pieces, and all of them are for our, for our information. We do not need to take any action on any of the financial or economic development items that we are addressing this evening. With that, I think, let's begin. Jim, would you lead us in the pledge?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
Jean, would you read the Town Visions statement which guides us?
Happy to. Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you very much. Next up for the, is the consent agenda. For the purposes of discussion, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Set move.
And we have a second from Jim. Any discussion? We've caught manger already. Anything else? Anything on the warrants? Any questions?
No.
All right, then I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, that seems unanimous, so we'll go from there. So next up is our monthly COVID update with Dr. Trey Dobson, who's the Chief Medical Officer at the SBMC. Thank you very much for being here.
Absolutely. Is this on? Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, great. So just a couple of things real quick, I'll talk about the here and now, which is actually the most important, but it's not near the most fun, it's more fun to talk about the future, so we can speculate a little bit there. On the here and now, I can tell you that we're all almost gravely concerned about the next two weeks. I call it 30 days, but we've been having increasing cases for over two weeks now, so it's really this upcoming two weeks and what's going to happen. I don't know if you looked at the hospitalizations today, but they're up to 108. I think there was actually a problem reporting them, so you may not know that, but I get to see those numbers, 108 in the state, not at SBMC, in the state, and that's very concerning. We haven't seen numbers that high. Locally, we're at 14 today, you know, we could be at 18 tomorrow and 12 the next day, there's, we've talked about this before, with small numbers, you can get quite a, quite a variable response, but in general, we would be foolish to think that the cases aren't going to increase, that the hospitalizations aren't going to increase just due to the caseload out there. There's all kinds of news that is welcome, good news about Omicron, about the effectiveness of both vaccine and especially booster, but that good news is a little bit overshadowed by the fact that we have thousands of cases each day. Of course, in the country, we're averaging over a million cases per day, you know this, 600,000 by measure, we know it's at least a million by non-measured. So eventually, that leads to hospitalizations, and we're seeing that in multiple areas. So there's two things that really would make a difference from the community by most folks, and that is, the first is to be boosted if you're not, assuming you're eligible, you know, you have to be five months out in order to be eligible. And the second is to really, if you are a vulnerable person, and by that I mean if you're over 65, or if you have comorbidities, regardless of your vaccination status, you actually, right now, need to refrain from visiting with extended family and attending gatherings. It's crucial over the next few weeks. You're going to be exposed, I heard some folks when I was walking in talk about, it's inevitable that you're going to be exposed to the virus. It's true, it's inevitable you're going to be exposed to the virus, but we need to do so in a way where everyone's not exposed at once and then needing hospitalization, because frankly, we won't be able to provide it, not anywhere in the state, not anywhere in the country, if the volumes of people needing care exceed the capacity, it's just pure math. You can't call the National Guard up when the National Guard is already in the hospitals working as nurses and doctors to begin with. So mitigating the next couple of weeks is incredibly important. Once we get through that, by the way, that doesn't mean we're not preparing, we've prepared the best we can. We've prepared, we're ready to go with as much staff and as much resources, but they're only finite. The next is looking out beyond that, so let's talk about, we'll get through February and we'll call it March, and it really does look pretty promising by most everyone's modeling and everyone's opinions. Again, some of that is unclear, because models aren't always accurate, and certainly experts aren't always accurate, but common sense and biologic plausibility says that the virus prevalence will then really drop, you've read this, I know many of you, and that's a good thing. It has to, because we're really looking at infectivity rates of nearly 50%, so that's half the people in this room will have been exposed to the virus, to a point that it had replicated some in their body by the end of March. Now, a lot of those people have already been exposed, because this has been going on, you know, since early 2020, but if you look at that, greater than 50%, and that's what we've talked about since the beginning of the pandemic, when is that herd immunity going to be reached? And that's what we're looking at occurring. And then what will be interesting is, how do we function as a society afterwards? And that's the true endemic state, where the virus is sort of an annoyance to healthy folks, causing symptoms once a year, or less, once every few years, because they're vaccinated and they're healthy, and a menace to people that are vulnerable. And that's true right now with bacterial pneumonia, that's true with influenza, influenza kills over 100 people a day, you know, those are most always vulnerable people, and COVID will be the same in that regard. That's all assuming there's no changes, that we're not predicting right now, some, what could those changes be? Of course, they could be a variant that's, that's difficult to contain, or it could be the fact that immunity is not following normal processes for viral infections, and wanes to a point where people get reinfected over and over again. We don't think those things will happen, because I've said this many times before, if viruses behaved in a way where they evolved to take out humans, they would have done so a long time ago. And they haven't. We've had many pandemics, and this is a terrible one, but this should be a point where, after the next, you know, few months, we're at a point where we can start saying, how do we deal with this, just like background other respiratory viruses? And then the final thing I'll say is, sometimes when I say things like this, there's vulnerable people in the population who say, hey, what about me? And that's true, that's the answer, that's what medicine is here for, that's what hospitals are here for, it's what all of your doctors and nurses are here for, so try to take care of you if you do get sick, and provide the treatment. And speaking of treatment, we've had Paxlovid, which is an oral drug that you read about, that's an antiviral, we received some in Bennington, it's all used up, we received a total of 20 doses last week, that'll increase. Right now, that drug, which is very similar in the way it works and the way it would be prescribed, to the medicine that many of you may have seen for the flu, so it should be reserved for people that it would benefit. And I'll give an example, I'm a pretty healthy person, I'll use myself, if I got COVID, I'm vaccinated and boosted, I really don't, shouldn't take that medicine, it's not really for me, it's for people that are more vulnerable. After the supply of the medicine gets much stronger, it'll probably be a little bit more liberal in the way we prescribe it, and we'll have more evidence on whether or not it's effective for those types of individuals. You've also heard about the infusion drugs, and I've talked about them here, the monoclonal antibodies, there's really only one that's now effective against Omicron, and unfortunately, it's in very short supply right now. We tend to get a weekly supply at the hospital, measured in, in less than a dozen, so we usually get about 10 to 12 doses, and, and those are administered right away to people to try to keep them out of the hospital. So I'll stop there and answer any questions you may have.
Jean actually beat you.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks for being here, Troy. I have two questions. First of all, we're hearing staffing is really problematic, how is our hospital doing with staffing? And I'll ask my second question, too. Do you agree that the actual number of positive cases is probably much higher, because people are now testing at home and they're not reporting it?
Yes, so I'll do the first one. Staffing at SBMC, in comparison to many hospitals, is actually hanging on pretty, pretty well. That is not too much of a sigh of relief, because it's, it's good today, it can go out tomorrow. I know, for example, in a certain ancillary department today, they had to cut down services because three or four, three or four people, which is a lot in a small department, tested positive, they were all asymptomatic, they tested positive, and occasionally someone has, you know, symptoms too, and they're out for several days. The move by the CDC, which is, you know, sort of criticized in the media and they're poking fun at it, it was one of the best things that's happened, we've been wanting that for a long time, if you're healthy, if you're well, you test positive, you should be able to get back into the workforce with just a few steps. And we've been doing that actually before the CDC changed that rule, because it has always been allowed in healthcare under certain circumstances, so it's really good. So to answer your question, today, we are in pretty good shape, tomorrow, I can't say. You know, I just hope that large numbers don't go out at once. I know UVM, the number I heard over the weekend was 400 callouts, of course, they're a huge place, but still 400 is just enormous, and so they're in dire straits right now. And throughout the day today, I saw some emails, you know, talk about the situation and what they could do. Then the second question was on numbers of cases, and, oh, it's absolutely true, it's not only people testing at home and positive, it's people that are just foregoing testing because, and that's always been through the pandemic, but as the numbers go up, so does the chances that that will happen. And it's not their fault, they, maybe they're vaccinated, maybe they're not, they just don't really feel that bad, and they can't go find a test anyway, so they just continue on with life.
Thank you.
That's the number when I said well over a million, because the actual measured numbers over the last seven days in the country have been about 650,000.
All right, Trey, I just got one question. And are, the number of people that the hospital is seeing, are they still principally unvaccinated?
So the patients that go into ICU are principally unvaccinated, there's about three different types of patients that come into the hospital with COVID-19, so the unvaccinated, then the vaccinated and vulnerable, and then the vaccinated, and I'm here because I broke my leg, not because I have COVID-19, I can't believe I tested positive, so that's what we see. So we had a couple of those today. And you read about New York, you know, reporting numbers of like, 40%, I think, 40 to 50% of positives, not in, not there for COVID, for other reasons. I know Vanderbilt tests most every patient that comes in the emergency department, and they're averaging one in seven are positive, yet most of those people are not there for COVID.
Hmm, interesting.
It skews that vaccine rate, so that's why I specifically said ICU, those that end up in the ICU, 85 to 95%, depending on the day, are unvaccinated.
Thank you. Any other questions? Sarah, do you have a question?
Yes, and I may have already answered, but I'm hearing things a little differently than I would be in person. So should we be more concerned about the hospitalization numbers or the positive test result numbers?
Yeah, you know, so most people will say hospitalization numbers, and I, of course, will say that for one reason, and that is healthcare sustainability. I mean, healthcare really can collapse locally and regionally if the numbers of patients presenting overtake the capacity of the hospital, whether that's due to staff shortages or just numbers of beds. And Sarah, let me just point out, the reason that is so crucial today is because all hospitals are strained, so, you know, if we had a tornado or a local event, we could transfer patients, we could call in staff, that's, that's what I meant when I said, you know, people say, call in the National Guard, and I say, we are the National Guard, like, the National Guard people work in the hospitals to begin with, so they're just, you're not grabbing them from anywhere. I still think case numbers are important to follow, maybe not the exact number, but an understanding, and that is because of the economic impact. You know, if you have that many people testing positive, a certain percentage of those people are going to be symptomatic, and most of them are going to be out of work for at least some amount of time, at least right now. You know, I can't say in the future, testing positive may not pull you out of work in the future, but right now, it certainly does, and that impacts the grocery, you know, when I was at the grocery store Sunday, you know, they didn't have anything there because of the inability to get drivers to bring the food there, there was also a storm, I think, that compounded it. So I do think both numbers are important, it's fine for us to estimate the prevalence rather than worrying that there's 653,797 cases today.
Thank you, although it does feel like we should worry about that. Any other questions from the board or staff? All right, any questions from the public? No questions? All right, well, thank you. As you know, we have, we're in a 45-day period for recommendation that, that people mask indoors, and we will be taking that up at the next meeting, because that will be at the end of that 45 days. And so your sense is that the next two to four weeks are going to be the most critical?
That's right. It's hard to pinpoint, just, I will clarify one thing, you've probably read that modeling is showing a mid-to-end-of-January peak of the cases with a steep decline. I mean, just remember, that's an average in the US, what happens here could be, could lag that, especially since we're a rural area. Hopefully, it'll actually be blunted, because we're a rural area, and follow a similar pattern. And once the cases go down, mitigation will still be important for vulnerable people for, you know, at least until mid, mid-spring.
Okay, thank you. All right. Oh, Bruce has a question.
Trey?
Yeah.
You just talked about mitigation would be, so, can you be specific and use ordinary personal language?
Sure. Yeah, I will, I will start off by saying, I'm just going to reiterate, the two, the two most important are being boosted, and if you are vulnerable, not for the next few weeks, being around extended family, I know that's so hard, but I'm only talking about a few weeks right now, I'm talking about what can we do today, not yesterday, what can we do today and tomorrow? And so those are the two biggest. The second, the second, masking does come right into play there, masking is an important mitigation measure, it's important to help spread, keep spread of the virus down, but for the most vulnerable, you just really need to even avoid for, for a few weeks.
Thank you. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so, now we're going to move on to the first of several sort of economic development updates. So Dan Monks is going to walk us through an overview of the process we've been following to look at priority projects and looking at funding streams. So Dan, I think I'm just gonna, so we are hearing, tonight is to hear Dan explain the process and, and the draft recommendations we've come up with, and then over the next two weeks, we'll be asking the public to respond. So tonight, we're not debating any of the, the merits of any of the, of the projects we're talking about, we're really looking at process.
Okay, so thank you very much. Do speak up if I tend to tail off, I'm going to try to keep my voice projecting, but I may, I may fade off, so please raise your hand or something to keep, to keep me on track. I did want to note that David White from White and Burke has joined us remotely, and he's listening, and he will be available for questions regarding the report that I'll talk about, that, that his firm produced for us with Dominic Cloud from, the Town Manager from St. Albans, so I just wanted folks to know that he's joined us. And he also will be doing a presentation later on TIFF, so, but he's here and, and available after the presentation. I will ask, just because it's a fairly lengthy presentation, that if at all possible, just let me get through, because I might answer your question later on, I promise to stay and answer any questions you have, but I'm going to try to just get through this so that we're not here all night. So, Jonah, do you want to start with the first slide? So, just a little context, the big, a big reason that we're here talking about this tonight is because of the American Rescue Plan Act, which resulted in a direct benefit to the town of Bennington of $3.9 million. The Select Board recognizing this as an opportunity, created a committee to look at that, look at the ARPA funding, look at priorities, as long, as well as looking at a lens, through a lens of many more funding sources, but ARPA is the one that definitely kicked this off, and so that's, that's kind of the context of why we're here, what we're going to be talking about. So, next slide, thank you, Jonah. So, the purpose of tonight's presentation is to present to the public and the entire Select Board the work to date of the Economic Development and Infrastructure Committee, I'm going to try to do an overview of the process that they followed, describe the work they've done to date, describe the next steps in the prioritization project, and, and like I mentioned, answer any questions that anybody has regarding the process. So as Jeanne mentioned, today's about process, next meeting is about substance, so. Slide three, thank you. So let's talk about the committee, who's on the committee? On the, on the Economic Development and Infrastructure Committee, I'm just going to call it the committee from now on, but everybody knows when I say committee, that's what they mean. So the Select Board, when they created this committee, they, they named the Chair, Jeanne, Vice Chair Jeanne, and Gary Corey as Select Board Members to the committee, and those folks worked with the Assistant Executive Director to the Bennington County Regional Commission, the Executive Director to the Better Bennington Corporation, the Town Manager, our Economic Development Director, and me, because I needed somebody to do the slideshow, so they picked me to be on there, too. So, the Select Board was very specific in their charge to the committee, and that was to develop a priorities list, prioritize, say that, prioritize list of projects in light of ARPA, tax increment, financing, and other funding sources that are or may become available to the town of Bennington in the near future. So it's really about, let's, developing a list of projects that there may be some funding out there to do, that's above and beyond our normal annual budget that we, that we raise through taxes. So those folks went to work on developing a draft prioritized list of projects, including brief description of all the projects considered, we'll talk about that in more detail later. I do want to stress, I'll say this probably three, four times throughout the meeting, this, this list is a, very much a work in progress, it will change between now and probably two weeks from now, and it will change while we're doing, going through this process of implementing these projects, so, and I'll talk about some of that, too. It's nothing in this, nothing's going to be set in stone, even after the Select Board tells the staff to go on and start working on some of these projects, because things will change. All right, let's talk about the prioritization process to date. What have we done, where are we now? So the first thing we did, the committee did, is gather an initial list of, and descriptions of municipal projects for review and prioritization. We solicited those from several different folks, including department managers, our economic development partners, BBC, BRC, the committee members submitted some projects, and we also spoke with the Department of Health, who submitted some projects. And again, this is just to develop our initial list. And the criteria for those projects was, they had to be a high priority project, and they had to be able to be constructed or implemented within the next few years, which includes the design, permitting, and construction process, so essentially, they need to be as close to shovel-ready as possible, otherwise, they really couldn't be considered, because they wouldn't be ready for, for the funding that's going to, short-term funding, I say short-term, three to five years. The next step that the folks did, the committee did, is they categorized the projects, they, one category was economic development projects, including housing projects, and those are essentially projects that require a public-private partnership, we'll talk about that more later. The other broad category was infrastructure and town operations, and those really are more the traditional municipal projects that are constructed or implemented by Town of Bennington, staff or contractors or consultants. There's not, there's no real public-private partnership with regard to those projects. And then if there were projects that didn't fit nicely into those categories, we had the catch-all other projects, so three major categories the committee looked at. Then the committee, they worked with our consultants, White and Burke and Dominic Cloud, to evaluate the economic development projects, because we didn't believe we had, and we don't have, the expertise in-house, really, to look closely and carefully at those types of projects. We, we all know we have a DPW department, and they can look at all those projects, and we have those sorts, those sorts of things when it comes to infrastructure, we have that expertise, but the committee believed, and the Select Board supported, working with White and Burke to do a report and recommend to us which economic development projects we should pursue first, which ones are the most likely to be, result in, in positive outcomes for us. And that report that White and Burke produced included a strong recommendation to extend the Tax Increment Financing District, which we'll talk about later, and they also noted the limited availability of ARPA funds for economic development projects, so it's fairly limited scope, it really has to have some direct tie to a municipal function, or in order for us to use ARPA funds. Included in that report, which I'll talk about later, is posted online, is a, is a long list of additional potential funding sources, which is, it was a nice index of what's available and those sorts of things, those things that we can seek for funding sources for economic development projects. The next thing we did is, as a committee, we reviewed the ARPA funding available to the town, the eligible uses for ARPA funds, and other potentially immediately available funding sources for projects, you know, things like state ARPA funds and money that might be available from the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. Those things are still pretty speculative, but we do know there's going to be a lot of federal money flowing through the state for infrastructure projects, and we wanted to make sure that we use the ARPA funds, or at least we focused on those projects that would be, that wouldn't necessarily get funds from those different sources of funding, in other words, we wanted to use those ARPA funds to really leverage projects that didn't have a good chance of getting funding from other sources. So I'll take a little break here and talk about the ARPA funding. So as I mentioned, municipal ARPA funds of $3.9 million come directly to the town, so the Select Board, you as a Select Board, has direct control over what those, where those funds go, subject to eligibility rules, which we'll talk about in a minute. And the timing, so we have to allocate all $3.9 million of that by the end of 2024, and all of it needs to be spent by 2026, or it goes back to the federal government. So I feel pretty confident we'll figure out how to spend it all by 2026, but those are the deadlines. There are four categories of eligibility, next slide, Jonah. So, response to public health emergency or its negative economic impacts, premium pay to essential workers, provision of governmental, government services to the extent of reduction in revenue due to COVID-19, and investments in water sewer or broadband infrastructure. So those are the broad categories of eligible uses of the funds. We did find out, as of mid-last week, probably Wednesday, Thursday, the federal government finally completed its final rule on, on the regulations that go along with these broad eligibility categories, and we'll be looking, taking a close look at that. We don't expect it to change much how the committee's priorities shaped out, but it does allow for much greater flexibility based on this final rule than we thought based on interim rule. So I think, I think the bottom line is that anything that's a traditional government expenditure, as long as it's not used to reduce debt or reduce the tax burden, will be something that we could, we could spend the money on, in addition to the other categories, but it does make, it does make it a little bit easier for folks, for the Select Board to, to spend money on projects that it finds are priorities, not hemmed in quite as much. There are very stringent reporting requirements to the Treasury Department, so we have to spend this money in accordance to these categories and the regulations that have been defined by the Treasury, so have to be really careful about that, or we have to give the money back to the feds, and we don't want that to happen. There is, for those folks who want more information about ARPA eligibility, there's a great web There is, for those folks who want more information about ARPA eligibility, there's a great website on, the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, has a great website on ARPA. You can just type in V L C T dash ARPA. It'll come up, and lots of good stuff, frequently asked questions, great webinars, recorded webinars, really a helpful resource if you really want to know about ARPA eligibility. That's the place to go. Okay. Next slide. Okay. So, the next step for the, for the committee, they did develop a prioritaries list of projects. They, as I mentioned, they, they separated those into three broad categories. The economic development projects were prioritized based on a consultation with Whiten Burke, as I mentioned, and town staff, and the infrastructure and town operations projects were prioritized based on consultation with department managers and town staff. And the committee used a tiered system, and essentially, projects that were placed in Tier One were projects that were deemed most likely candidates on which to begin work immediately. And I'll discuss a little bit more about that tiered system. But again, very much a work in progress. None of the projects that are in Tier One are any particular order. The committee just felt, these are the ones, based on the information we have to date, we should focus on. Okay. Thanks, Jonah. He's reading my mind, so this is great. Thank you, Jonah. So, the next step of, the committee has posted online all of its work to date. It concludes, it includes the prioritized list, and then a list annotated with all the summaries of the projects. It includes the Whiten Burke report and some information on ARPA eligibility. But all that's posted, you can see the website up there. I won't, I'm not going to read it, but you can go online and check out all those documents that were used as a resource for the committee, and that were created by the committee and its consultant, Whiten Burke, Dominic Cloud. One also very important thing, as part of that website, we've posted, thanks to Jonah, an articulation of how to participate in the public input process. There's a, there's a, there's a link right on that webpage to submit comments, and I'm going to talk about that a little bit more later, but just so folks know, that's the place to go, and we'll talk about that again. All right. So, let's just talk about the tiered system, just so folks have an idea of kind of what the decision-making process was for the committee with regard to the, to the projects that they placed in the top tiers and lower tiers. We'll start with economic development projects. We use a three-tier system there. Tier One, and I'm just going to read this just so it's clear, includes projects with near-term opportunity, that's within one to two years. There's stakeholders at the table, and there's a clear role for the town. So, projects that were deemed to have all three of those characteristics made it to Tier One. Tier Two were, they're important economic projects, but there wasn't really, couldn't define a clear role for the town at this time. Now, that could change tomorrow, there, and there could be a clear role. Something could change. There could be an investor that comes to the fore. We'll see. But that's all about staying flexible and making sure we, we watch these things, look for opportunities as they evolve. And the Tier Three projects, they're, they were determined to be a bit speculative and or not to have a role for the town at this time. Again, a Tier Three project could move up if, if some sort of conditions changed, but this is based on facts as of when the committee reviewed them. Okay. So then we'll talk about infrastructure and town operation projects. This list was really focused on ARPA. Economic development projects, we looked at other, we looked at ARPA, we looked at TIF, we looked at other possibilities of funding sources, private investment. Infrastructure and town operations projects, this is really all about where can we spend the ARPA funds? So, and again, projects were not listed in any particular order, but there is Tier One and Tier Two, and we'll just talk about what was the criteria for Tier One. Includes high priority projects that appear to be ARPA-eligible, and they may be constructed or implemented within two to four years, and estimated cost of the project should not exceed available municipal ARPA funds. Lots of projects out there, believe it or not, that were way more expensive than 3.9 million dollars. We said, you know what? That's not going to make the list. So, Tier Two projects, they're all projects that we need to do someday, and it's important that we know that they're out there. Could be two years from now, could be 10 years from now, but they were projects that, we didn't include them in Tier One for one or more of the following reasons. Either it's not ARPA-eligible, that we determined that the project may be funded from other sources, or is likely to be funded from other sources, the project's not shovel-ready enough to be constructed within four years, and/or the project's estimated cost exceeds the available municipal ARPA funds, as I mentioned before. If it's a big, big-ticket item, probably not going to throw ARPA funds at it at this time. It is important to note, as I mentioned before, that the recently passed approximately $1 trillion infrastructure investment in Jobs Act may provide significant additional funding for infrastructure projects. But there's few specifics known right now, but we know there's money coming this way through the state for, in particular, likely water, sewer, and highway infrastructure, bike-ped infrastructure, that sort of thing. How much is going to come to this area? We don't know, but we're going to be watching that and make sure that we're competitive for those funds. But again, just a note about that. Okay. So, we're just going to show this one quickly. No one read it carefully, because this is just an example of the Tier One projects and economic development and infrastructure and town projects. This is all online. We want folks to go look at them, think about them, provide comments to us, but we're not going to talk about the specifics of these particular projects. Just wanted to know that we actually did come up with a list, and this is, these are the Tier One projects. Again, could change, but that's really not the focus today, what those projects are, just that here, this, we did go through a process to get to this point. So, let's move on, Jonah. Okay. Now, let's talk about next steps. So, we're in today's meeting, and we're talking about the process of we, as we, as I've mentioned. So, we'll talk about the process today, we'll talk about going, where we've been, where we're going, and we'll talk about questions, we'll answer any questions about the process. That's it, today's meeting. The next, the next step is to gather written comments. So, we are going to leave open, public, for public comment. The public comment period will remain open until January 21st, 2022. As I mentioned before, all the source documents are posted online, the prioritization list, the Whiten Burke report. We are urging folks to submit written comments online at that website. You can also drop them in the mail. You could put priority projects, 205 South 3, Bennington, Vermont, or you can drop it in, we have a secure Dropbox on the front porch. Drop them in there. Just make sure you label it priority project comments. We'll get them. We'll make sure that we collate them all and get them to the Select Board. So, they will all have them by the next meeting, all the comments. We'll go to the Select Board for them to review before the next meeting. So, just a, just a note about public comment, public participation. By far, the most way to be effective and efficient in providing meaningful public input is to submit written comments. It allows for the Select Board to review them and think about them, try to incorporate them, those that make sense. You know, that, we just urge you to do that. That's going to be, doesn't mean you can't come to the meeting and talk about your feelings and what you think is important, but it'll be just most effective for, if you can get those written comments to us before the 21st, so we can really take a look at those and try to, try to respond to those as, in a way that's meaningful. All right. Next step, public meeting on January 24th. So, that's, that's when we'll talk about, we, Select Board, will discuss the written comments received, to the extent that they're, to the extent that they're meaningful comments that, that the board can respond to. They're, they're going to, we hope, the Select Board will finalize the preliminary prioritization of projects and authorize staff to begin work on the Tier One ARPA priority projects. So, that's our goal for the next meeting. Talk about comments, talk about substance of the priority list and merits of projects, and hopefully come to at least a preliminary consensus of the board. Yes, staff, go work on these projects. So, kind of jumped ahead to the next slide, Jonah. So, once, again, once the Select Board authorizes staff to begin work on the Tier One projects, there will be several different, there'll be steps that we'll need to take as a staff to begin that process, and it'll include some or all of the following things, like working with consultants, like engineers, and other design professionals, working with financial consultants, working with attorneys, et cetera, procurement or bidding, design, permitting, construction, administrative oversight, et cetera. All those things will have to happen once, once the board authorizes staff to begin work on those projects. So, there's a lot to do before we actually put shovels in the ground or sign contracts, but we'll start, we'll start that process as soon as, we being town staff, we'll start that process as soon as the Select Board gives us the green light. So, number one message tonight, though, is we have to remain flexible. The list of priority projects is a working document today, it'll be a working document tomorrow, it'll be a working document probably a year from now. We have to be, it is very likely to change over time. We have to be ready to respond to changing conditions and challenges, and we need to take advantage of emerging opportunities. So, as, as the facts, as things change, we need to be ready to react. None of this is going to be set in stone. So, we may, we may have to pivot and look at other projects. We may have to do some of the projects that we've decided are priorities a little differently than we thought we would. That's all going to be, that's all part of doing this, and we'll be, we'll be making sure that we keep track of that and that we report regularly. We being the select, the staff, report regularly to the Select Board and the public on how these projects are proceeding, so that everyone understands where we are in that process. Okay. Thank you, slide. I mentioned, we've got to remain, we've got to remain flexible. We really, really, really want you to go to this website, look at the projects, comment, did we miss anything? Are there opportunities out there that we didn't think about? Are there projects that, that we say don't, don't look like they're ready to go, that, geez, I know this about that project, it could happen tomorrow if it just got a little push? We want to know that. And so, please, please, please go to that website, look at the project list, give us your comments, and we'll make sure that those get to the Select Board, and obviously the staff will review them as well. So, that's it for my long presentation, sorry, but I'm happy to answer any questions you folks have about the process. I'm not going to, I'm not going, I will not talk about any specific project this time, because that's for the next meeting, but if there are questions about the process, either where we've been, where we are, where we're going, let's ask them now, get it figured out, and I'd be happy to address those, as well as, we have at least, we have two committee members here could help out, too, if, if I flounder in answering those questions. So, that's where we are.
All right. Jean, your hand went up fast.
I'm going to ask these two questions, and if they're premature, then just tell me. Can you speak to, or should you speak to, the way the money's going to come to us? I know it's not coming in one fell swoop.
I can certainly talk about that, yep.
Okay. And should that, the way the money's coming, should that influence the project choices? And I have another question, too, but you can answer that one.
So, I'll answer first, how's the money coming to us? It comes, it's going to come in what they call two tranches, two payments. The first payment, half of the 3.9 million dollars, is already in the bank account. We already have it in our town coffers. The second one will probably come next September. This, well, I say next, we're in 2022, this September, or earlier. So, to answer your question, I do not think that will impact which projects we do, or even the timing of the projects that we do, because it's going to take us time to ramp up, get everything going. None of these projects could happen even within the next three months. We can get started on them, but we're certainly not going to be building them, we're not going to be implementing them fully in the next even six months. So, that should not be an issue.
Okay. Thanks. And the other, it's almost a comment, but I guess a question as well. You mentioned partnering with other agencies, not-for-profits, and this is more for the public than for me, but I'm assuming that partnering with agencies, they would have access to funding sources that if the town were to do that same project alone, we may not be, have access to those funding sources. So, not only partnering, you know, will increase expertise and, you know, creative thinking involving really great people who work on great things, but it also is another avenue to get more funding.
Absolutely. That's a great point, especially with the economic development projects, which we put housing as an economic development, because we do think that's very important to economic development. There are partners out there who have much more expertise than we do, that we would very much enjoy doing a project that appears to be ARPA-eligible and ready to go. You know, the, the problem is, this is, seems like two to, two years to allocate, to allocate the funds seems, oh, that's plenty of time. That's a really short time. That means you probably already should, already should have a project ready to go in order for that, those funds to really be meaningful, because we can't be talking about projects five, six years down the road. We should be planning for those, but they're not going to get ARPA money. So, that's, that's kind of where that is. But absolutely, 100%, we want to, the best way to use these funds is to leverage them. If we can put a million dollars in to do a $6 million project, that's what you want to do.
Right.
But, that's.
And you do have to spend the money by a certain date.
It all has to be allocated by the end of 2024 and actually spent by the end of 2026.
Right.
So, you, you have to know what the project is, you got to have the contracts ready and done by 2020, end of 2024. You actually have to implement and construct whatever you're doing, all that has to be completed and paid for by the end of 2026.
Thank you.
Great. Great questions. Tom, do you have any questions? Jim? Bruce? Sarah? Do you have any questions? All right. So, public, any questions on process? Yes, Rose, please, please come up.
I know this is the same old thing, but is there anything that they can use or apply for, for things to, for seniors to have things to do with the seniors? There's, there's nothing being done.
So, thanks, Rose, for your question. I would suggest that, look at the priority projects, and I think you will see that they cross a lot of different demographics, and there are a lot of different kinds of projects in there. So, seniors are, are absolutely identified in some of the projects. So, do go online and look at the projects, and I think.
I don't, I'm, I don't have a computer.
I'm sorry?
I don't have a computer.
You, there's a computer at the senior center, so you can certainly use the one there. You can also use the, the computers at the public library, both the Bennington Free Library and the McCullough Library. And we have, Stuart has just instigated a new process where there is a complete packet of any materials for any of our meetings that are at the Bennington Free Library. So, you can go there and read them, and they do have a photocopy machine for a small price. They can make photocopies of anything you want. So, there should honestly not be a barrier to being able to look at all the projects. So, so please do that. So, any process, and then you have two weeks to respond, and as Dan pointed out, there is a way to submit your comments online, but if you would rather do them in a, a letter, you can do that. You can drop it off at the town office, or you can mail it to the town office, but there is a secure Dropbox at the town office. So, you have the next two weeks to look at those projects, and you can do that at senior center or at one of the libraries, and then to comment on them.
Do you have any ideas as far as anything that they might do?
Yeah. There's a whole set of, it's been up since last Wednesday online, but you can go to the library and read through it. So, in our packets, in the packets that went out to the public, there is the full list of all the projects and, and why they were selected in each of the tiers. So, yes, Rose, I think you'll, I think you'll see projects that will appeal to you.
Well, there needs to be. I, I mean, I hate to keep saying the same, same thing over and over, but.
Yep.
Nothing, I went up there the other day. There was like one person there.
All right.
And they were too friendly.
Hey, Rose, here's a hard copy. You're welcome to it. I don't need it anymore. Okay?
Oh, watch all the wires. Jeez.
It's got all the information in there.
That's very kind of you, Jim.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yeah?
Is there a packet went out from the library?
Well, the packet's online. The packet- Well, the packet's online, the packet is online, but there is a hard copy of the packet at the library.
Okay. It's at that website?
And at that website, yes, which is the best place to go. Any other questions from the public? Those are great questions. I'm wondering, David White? Hello? Do you have any question, do you have any comments on this? No? Okay. And Sarah, did you have any questions? I asked you, right? Okay. All right, then, Dan, I think, obviously, if some questions come up, you're welcome to call the town office or email any of the select board members, and we will help you as best we can. Okay? All right.
Thank you, everybody. Really appreciate it. I'm going to just stay up there and I'll make sure, I can introduce David once you kick us off to the next agenda item.
Perfect. Go right ahead.
So, okay, the next thing on our agenda is a discussion regarding extending our tax, extending, extending our tax increment financing district. David has prepared a, David White has prepared a PowerPoint presentation for us. I should introduce you to David. David is a principal with the firm of White and Burke in Burlington, the, a, a expert in TIF and many other matters, but they've, they've done a lot of work in TIF in Vermont, and they're definitely the firm that has, has the most expertise and knowledge regarding TIF in Vermont. So David, I'll let you do a little more of a, of a thorough introduction of yourself, and then we'll get you to share your screen and start with your presentation. But thank you very much for making the time to join us today, and we appreciate all your work today, helping us get through this TIF, TIF issue and the, and the economic development project. So thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Great. So I am going to run quite a number of slides here to talk about what TIF is, how it works for those who are, may not be familiar with it, or at least could use your pressure. And then I'm going to talk about the Bennington TIF district specifically in our recommendations. So first of all, about me and the company, now, White and Burke, we're more than a 30-year-old firm. We do consulting on commercial real estate, development projects statewide and occasionally out of state. And certainly one of our top areas of expertise is in community development. Personally, my career started as the founding executive director of a nonprofit downtown development corporation in Montpelier, and I have a master's degree in community economic development. I've been involved in doing community development work for my entire career, which is now, I must have been one in 40 years. Regarding TIF in specific, we were the firm that worked with the town of Bennington to set up your TIF district back in 2017. And we also have in fact set up six of the last seven TIF districts that have been established in Vermont. So you certainly are intimately familiar with how TIF is being run throughout the state. And we've advised on two of the others that didn't originally set up, but where they called us in to provide advice and consultation as they were working on aspects of their TIF districts. And certainly a big piece of what we do is what we call public-private partnerships, is how you bring together the public interest with the private enterprise to meet, to achieve mutual goals and objectives. And that's one of the key focuses that we have as a company. So working with Bennington as we have been is right at the core and our sweet spot, if you will, in terms of what we do as a company. So I'm going to talk about TIF, as I said, and we'll talk about Bennington's TIF, and then we'll talk about the process to extend the TIF district if you so choose. So what is TIF? So TIF stands for Tax Increment Financing. And the concept here is simply that, it can be a little bit confusing, so bear with me here, and I wish I were there in person because I like to talk with my hands and so forth, so to help illustrate. Nonetheless, the basic concept is that you establish a district with very specific values, certain properties are in the district, other properties are not in the district. And within that district, you establish what's called the original taxable value, or OMTV for short. And all the taxes generated by that original taxable value continue to go where they've always gone. They go to the education fund at the state, they go to the general fund, et cetera. You don't touch those dollars, you aren't dipping into those dollars. But what you do is that the concept is that the municipality borrows money by using the TIF district. They invest, they take those funds and invest in very specific infrastructure projects that are expected to generate new private development, whether it's a direct nexus or link between the public investment in infrastructure improvements and the private development that will, is anticipated to occur. And then you take the new incremental taxes, only the new incremental taxes that are generated by that new development or the redevelopment, and those, a portion of those taxes go to pay the debt service. And one of the keys in a TIF district is that you're not doing it on a project-by-project basis, but rather you're doing it collectively, the district as a whole, so that you're not having to evaluate just individual projects, but rather what's going on with the district as a whole, what are the new incremental taxes that are being generated? Because the hope is, as you do the investment, you trigger specific projects, and I'll talk more about that in a moment, but also that in general, it stimulates development in the district, and other people choose to make investments because they see the district of the improvements going on, and they want to be part of it. So that you can take the taxes generated by those projects, by all projects occurring in the district, and capture the new value, again, not the original taxable value, but the new incremental value, and the taxes from that new increment go toward retiring the debt. So that's the basic concept. So how does it really, excuse me? I thought I heard a question. Okay. How does TIF work? I mentioned the original taxable value, and only new incremental tax revenue gets used, not any of the underlying tax revenue. In, in the case of Bennington's TIF, and it varies a little bit from TIF district to TIF district, but in Bennington's case, 70% of the taxes that would otherwise go to the state education fund get allocated to the TIF district and are available to the town to then pay debt service for the investments, debt service on the borrowing that's done to make the, the investments. And then 100% of the municipal, municipal income goes toward that same purpose. So this is part of the power of TIF in that you're using funds that otherwise wouldn't be there for the town at all, and in this case, we're talking about the education tax. But also, keep in mind that the concept here is that but for the investments the town's making, these projects wouldn't happen anywhere, and so the taxes wouldn't be there for anyone. So this is really the idea is to stimulate that new development. But at the end of the life of the TIF district, that taxable value, the new increment, that incremental values are still there, and at that point, when all debt's been paid off, you have all this money that then has, had been going to debt service that is now available for other purposes. So it's a big rainfall when you look down the road to the municipality and the education fund. So in terms of Bennington itself, your district, as I said, was established in 2017. And the next thing is critical, that the way TIF works in Vermont is that while the, you have, you must borrow, do your initial borrowing within five years of when the TIF district was established. If you do that, then you automatically get a five-year extension. You've got five more years during which you can borrow funds. But you have to do it in the first five years, the near five years, and on March 31st of this year, unless you seek an extension. And you can go to VEPSY, which is the core, what we want to talk about tonight, the Vermont Economic Progress Council, VEPSY for short, which approves TIF districts. You can go to VEPSY and request that despite the fact you haven't borrowed any money yet, you haven't used the TIF district yet, you could ask them to extend it and to allow you to borrow it for the rest of the period of time. Now, I said that there'd be five more years, but in this case, there are actually seven more years through March 29th, and that's because the legislature in its last two sessions has done two one-year extensions as a result of the pandemic for every TIF district in the state. So that in fact, if you get this extension, and that's a seven-year period, and I have heard that there's an effort in a way to get a third one-year extension. That's speculative at this point, but I understand the legislature will be talking about that. So it's possible that if you seek this extension and VEPSY approves it, then you'll have through March 31st or 23rd, but that's speculative. We do know as of today, maybe through 2029. And then one of the other keys here is that you have authority, excuse me, you can retain the education increment for a 20-year period that commences when you make your first borrowing. So if you're closing your borrowing hypothetically, your first loan as of December 31st hypothetically this year, you would have 20 years until December 31st of 2020, 2042, to retain the incremental taxes, the, the education portion of the increment, that's 70% that I talked about earlier. So that has, that time period has yet to be triggered, will be when you issue your first debt. So let's talk about economic development in Vermont in general, because it's directly related to what Bennington's experiencing. And the first key thing to know is that in many, many cases, development costs exceed the value. It costs so much to build buildings these days, and it costs just as much to build in Bennington as it does in Burlington. The only difference may be land cost, but materials, labor, those costs are just as high. And the consequence is, you know, whereas in Burlington, the end values are higher and the rental rates are higher, and sometimes projects can work in Burlington that are straight market costs, market projects, it's very hard to do that anyplace out of greater Chittenden County in the state of Vermont. I'd say it's impossible, it does happen, there are some market, fully market rate projects that happen, but not many, because typically the costs are simply too high, and you're going to spend more money than the project's worth when it's over. And then you compound that with the fact that there's actually in Vermont, limited market demand for most uses currently. That shifts from time to time, the market does change. The one exception is housing. We all know there's statewide, statewide housing shortage, and the recent study that was done certainly indicates that in the Bennington area, there is substantial need for additional housing and market demand for additional housing. But as a consequence of these factors, there really is very little development happening in most of the state outside of Chittenden County. You are not alone in that. And in fact, when we toured downtown, I was actually impressed with how much has been happening. And I think you should feel good and proud about the steps that are being taken by various property owners and businesses to invest in your town. It's really, I think, doing better than many other communities in the state. And I hope you know that and feel it, not say that you don't want more and shouldn't get more, and I think it's possible to do it. And the key here, which I touched on earlier and I'll touch on again, is public-private partnerships. And in terms of how those things come together, the Pupman Block certainly is one example of that, but it's, they don't all have to be quite, they're complicated, but they don't all have to be quite as complicated as that first one was. And TIF can be key, because TIF brings a lot of money to bear potentially to resolve issues and to eliminate barriers to enable projects to move forward. So if we look at Bennington, why? You know, why think about extending this? You haven't used it yet, you've had it for about five years and it hasn't happened, and I want to talk about a few things. One, I already mentioned, but I'll give you an example and a few examples shortly, but it's a very powerful economic development tool. We have seen many successes around the state. And one of the reasons why it's successful is that it's actually quite flexible in terms of how you can use it. It can, it depends, in some cases, people need more parking, in some cases, it's brownfield cleanup, in other cases, it's utilities, water and sewer extensions, or upgrades, or what have you. And so you can tailor the use of the funds to the needs of a specific potential private project so that you're eliminating the barrier for that project. And it can be key for product, for projects, and here's that phrase again, public-private partnerships. It's all about how you put those things together. And one of the keys in doing it is that you enter into a development agreement that really gives you a high level of assurance that if you make this investment, the private sector will, will step in. Typically, you don't actually spend, start spending money, like this isn't always the case, but it's typically you don't start spending the money on, on the public infrastructure until the developer is ready to bring it around as well. But to make this happen requires proactive leadership. You really, you can't wait for, you know, somebody to come knocking on the door and say, gosh, can I use your TIF district? You've got to be out there looking for the projects, try and put them together and negotiate those deals. It really does take initiative. And the towns that have done really well have taken that initiative. The ones where it has been sluggish are the ones where that, that has not been happening. So I really want to emphasize that as a very important element to making this successful. And let's talk about some success. TIF, it works. In Hartford, you know, White River District in Hartford, their TIF district, they, they were established in 2011, and in the decades since, they have added 82% to their grand list within the TIF district. It's just astonishing. In St. Albans, they've added over 50% in the TIF district. And in Milton's Downtown, they're up 36% in their TIF district. And this didn't happen by chance. I want to talk about the Hartford example in a little bit more detail. It really has been very transformative and critically, and this is certainly every responsible select board member, city council member, and communities around the state's concerned about this, is it's paying its bills? The answer is yes. Every TIF district in Vermont is paying its bills. There may be some cash flow issues for, for a few years, particularly in the early, because the incremental taxes may not come online immediately, but they all in the end have been paying their bills and the cash flow positive. But again, one of the things that happened in Hartford was that they proactively got out there and they marketed this. Interestingly, one of the things they did was to actually develop a video that they circulated to property owners and developers and so forth, touting the kinds of things that they would like to see in the TIF district. So let me show you some examples, some before and after photos. I'll go through these quickly, but this was Prospect Street before. That's what it is today. It's an actual photo of today, two office buildings and their plans for a third one to go up. They invested in utilities and streetscape and sidewalks and landscaping and lighting and so forth, and it made it an attractive place for development. The American Legion, they did similar work there, and there, that's what it looks like today. You look at Gate Street, this is a former auto dealership that was closed and out of business. That's what it is today. It's a theater for performing arts. This was a, simply a vacant lot at the corner of North Main and Bridge Street. That's the building that's there today. It did streetscape, utilities, all of these involved a range of things, and in this case, they did some improvements to the underpass under the railroad that you see to the left of this photo. Or a vacant lot on South Main Street. There was before, this is the building that, it's another construction photo, but that building, I believe, is now finished and occupied. It's got retail on the first floor and apartments on the upper floors. This is all in the TIF district and directly stimulated by the investment, but it also required them proactively getting out there, really working with property owners to make it happen. So let's talk about one example of how this could come into play in Bennington, and that's the Ben High Project that I think a lot of people are interested in. The owner is interested, the owner, I, I understand, has spent some money on fixing the roof and maybe some windows and so forth, and the town's interested, the town already, as I understand it, along with some nonprofit partners, operates some programs there. And there's discussion of, you know, the town doing a much more in the way of programming for senior citizens and others there. But it doesn't appear, as far as I can tell from what I understand, to be a huge priority for the owner who's out of town and has other projects. It's sort of moving slowly, so precious. How do you get this to really move? Again, the answer, I think, is a public-private partnership. How can the town in its interests, use its interest in a portion of the Ben High to stimulate the owner and to do the rest of it? I think it would be a mistake to step in and just do your piece and then wait for him to do this thing. Instead, I would talk with him about negotiating a deal in which you say, okay, we will do this, we will make this investment or this other. In exchange, we're looking for you. In exchange, we're looking for you to do, to do your project now, not, you know, later when the slow boat comes through." And if that happens, I believe that there, I haven't run the numbers because I don't know the details, but it's pretty easy to see how even 40 units of development, my understanding is there's more capacity than that. Even 40 units of development, they generate enough new incremental taxes to support at least $2 million of that. My guess is it could be a higher number. And that $2 million in turn could be a substantial portion, or maybe all of the money that gets spent to make the investment that you want in the public facilities. And the way this benefits that majority is twofold, or two clear ways it could, that is. You could, on one hand, condominiumize the property and buy that portion, so the developer gets a chunk of the money that helps underwrite the cost for the private portion of it, because that's going to be extremely expensive to do those renovations and maybe very hard to make the numbers work. The other alternative would be not to buy it, but rather to rent it on kind of an as-is basis, an as-is condition basis, at a relatively low rate, but it still gives the developer the cash flow that helps support the overall cost of his overall development. And then, but in either scenario, use TIF as maybe the soul or certainly a major source of funding to make that investment. And that nexus between them gets the, like, get a written development agreement that says, "The day we start our investment is the day you're going to be, you know, underway with your construction." And it could be the key to getting this project done and underway. And that's about one example of how it could come together and how the numbers can make terrific sense, and it doesn't cost your current taxpayers anything, because it really is self-supported through incremental taxes. So, as I said, it's just about one example. Putnam Phase Two, I think there are opportunities there for the town to use TIF. And it alone was likely to generate a very substantial increment that would then allow you to roll in and do yet more projects. The Catamount School comes to mind as an obvious opportunity. Exactly where the public infrastructure need is, I don't know, but I can brutally guarantee there's something there that would help get that, that project moving. Friendly's Building, one way that TIF has been used is actually very successfully. It's municipalities actually use TIF to buy a building. You do the environmental remediation, and then you resell the building, and the developer doesn't have to cover that cost. And in some cases, you resell the building for a dollar, because bringing it down, bringing that down, the land cost down, makes it more feasible economically for the developers to then be able to do his or her development project. And it's TIF that's paying that cost. It's not actually the town taxpayers. You're, basically, the taxes that will come out of that building, once it's redeveloped, it's incremental taxes as well as the others. Remember, I talked about this being a district, is what pays for it. People's Bank Building could be a project, et cetera. There are a lot of different projects around where TIF can be extremely powerful. And you can see the kinds of things that have happened in Hartford and St. Albans and elsewhere. So how do you go about extending the TIF district? You're required to apply to VEPCE for what's called a substantial change. And this would involve, in your case, asking for the extension beyond the initial five years to do your first borrowing. But also, you really need to have a plan, because your circumstances change over the last five years, the specific private projects that are likely to come up, the specific infrastructure needs, all those can be different. So you'll need to have a new updated TIF district plan and a new finance plan. There's a whole public process involved here, and you're obligated to have public hearings. The select board would have to approve the submission. And then you go to VEPCE, and assuming VEPCE approves the request for substantial change and the extension. I want to be clear that this alone doesn't commit you to actually using the funds or using TIF. There's still process every time you want to borrow money. So it requires future select board votes to put it on a va, excuse me, on a ballot question. And then it requires the public in turn to vote to approve that. So this is just a process to keep that tool available to you. It does not, at this stage, commit you to using it. So, as I think you know, we have a major proposal to you to do that work on your behalf to create the district, updated district plan and finance plan, to submit all of the materials that are required to VEPCE, to side by side with your town team to make the presentation of VEPCE and so forth. And so really, one of the key questions in front of you tonight is whether or not you will approve the contract proposal we've put on. Because I remind you, we have got to do this by March, or else the TIF district expires and you lose this opportunity. So why do it? It's a powerful tool. It finances economic development without raising property taxes. And it's going to expire unless it's extended, and we've got a March deadline. So that's my presentation.
Thank you, David.
Happy to answer any questions.
Yes, please, board, any questions? Because we do need to make a decision tonight. Yes, Jean.
Hi, this is Jean Connor. I just have one question. I know March is the deadline. Does the process need to be completed by March? Or if it's in process, does that meet the deadline?
If it's in process, we'll comply by March. We'll check with VEPCE, and as long as we submit by March, if they do their hearing hypothetically in April and decide in May, that still is okay.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
Can I ask a follow-up then? So does the public, but we would need to have a public hearing here before the end of March, before you can submit, right? So, yes, so it is, okay.
Yeah, there is, there is a lot of process we have to do as a staff, working with Whitenberg and a process on behalf of the select board with approving the revised plan before March. So we do have to, we do have to hustle.
Yes, yes.
This is going to be a big hustle, no question about it. It's a tall order to get this all together in a short period of time.
I move that we accept the agreement as stated.
All right, and so the agreement would be to hire Whitenberg to do a substantial change proposal, not at a cost not to exceed $15,000?
Correct.
All right, so, all right, are you seconding it?
Yes.
And we have a second. Any more discussion? All right, then I'll call the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that, Sarah, did I hear you?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so that was unanimous? All right, so we were going to be quick, David, because we want you to get working tonight.
Hold on.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I'll be in touch with Stephanie, David, and we'll get this thing rolling. So, thank you.
Great. I'm going to try to stick around a little bit to listen to the next presentation. But I am going to have to be able at some point, because I've got a social media meeting with the Williams County Council.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Please, you're welcome to stay as long as you can. So then, next up is a presentation on the Energizer reuse study. And Bill Colvin, who's Assistant Director at the Bennington County Regional Commission, is here tonight to talk with us about that.
Hi, good evening. Thanks, thanks very much. Certainly exciting to see at least the first half of the meeting tonight, filled with economic development activity and opportunities. So as David said, I think we have a lot to be proud of in Bennington. There is a tremendous amount going on. And as I participated in my statewide meetings with other development entities, I can tell you, there's a lot of attention being paid to Bennington, and a lot of people trying to figure out exactly, exactly what's happening in Bennington that's leading to, to the development that we see. So with regard to the specific topic tonight, we completed the regional, Bennington County Regional Commission, and Camoin 310, working with the town of Bennington. Completed the Energizer reuse study in late September. We wanted to get things buttoned up, and there's been a lot of other things on your plate. So here we are in January, reviewing the study and just kind of hitting the high points. So I will run through seven or eight minutes, hitting the high points of the study, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions. Dan? So similar to other plans that we have done, most specifically the Bennington Downtown Area Wide Plan, which ended up being frankly quite instrumental in kicking off the Putnam Block redevelopment Phase One. The plan, the Energizer reuse study consisted of several parts, including a review and analysis of existing planning materials that the town had, town and region had undertaken. Looking at the existing conditions, inventory and analysis, the environmental condition of the property, land use, maps and photos. A site analysis, including the infrastructure and physical constraints on redevelopment of the property. And in this case, included a pretty significant market study, which we took the opportunity to make a little broader than a traditional property redevelopment study. So traditionally, when you undertake these efforts, you will do an analysis of the, of the property in specific and look at what the market and redevelopment potential is for that specific property. But given all the aforementioned balls in the air, and in particular in housing in Bennington, we thought it would be wise to take a kind of broader look at specifically the housing component and the need for housing in Bennington, and broaden that to become a townwide housing assessment, which was going to ride along with the property-specific reuse plan. So got a little bit broader market study in this case than is traditional. And then there were some redevelopment scenarios and project feasibility analyses, and the development of the Energizer reuse plan and implementation document. So that entire document, minus the pages of appendices, was included in your packet for, for this meeting. The Energizer reuse plan funding was, came from no new dollars from the town of Bennington, and in fact, no direct funding from the town in this particular case. So it was $67,000 and some change, made up of a $20,000, that should say EPA, Environmental Planning Agency, Planning Grant, which came in via Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation. $22,000 from the Agency of Commerce and Community Development in the form of a municipal planning grant. Shire's Housing kicked in $8,000 in this particular case, so that we could broaden that market study, as I mentioned, to become a townwide housing assessment, recognizing, as Shire's did, that information was going to be certainly useful to projects that they would be undertaking in the near future. And then there was 17, a little over $17,000 of BRCRC staff time, which was uncompensated as part of this, resulting in a total project cost of a little over $67,000. As we've done in the past, we formed a steering committee that looked to cover all corners, really frankly, of the community and getting broad input into this plan and overseeing the effort. And in this case, it was made up of representatives from the town of Bennington, both staff and elected, Gary Corey represented the select board, Mike McDonough, the planning commission. There were two representatives, the co-listing agents on the property who, from VT Commercial. They're the listing entity working on behalf of Energizer. So we had the real estate team that has the listing involved. And then there were a number of community participants representing public and private housing development, business interests, and neighborhood representatives, and some real estate professionals. And then the, the project team was made up of representatives from Vermont DEC, the outside consultant, Camoin 310, and then numerous BRCRC staffers. I think we're all pretty familiar with the Energizer facility, and we're at SIPS in Bennington, just outside of downtown, and very proximate there, too. It is bounded, as we know, on the east by Park Street, on the north by Gage, on the, I'm sorry, on the west by Park Street, on the north by Gage, east by Saford. The southern border is the Walooosa River, and Scott Street bisects the property running left to right on the screen. You are also familiar that there are a number of schools very nearby, and the Bennington Recreation Center. It's a largely residential area, which we think is important to the redevelopment opportunities here at the site. There's a little over 300,000 square feet in the Energizer facility, about 140,000 square feet on the first floor in a couple of different buildings, and about 140,000 square feet in upper floors. As we know, right now, it is, it had been most recently, and has been really since its inception, a manufacturing use, even though that area has changed and it's almost exclusively residential at this time. And there's about nine acres at the site in four separate parcels. So really significant, 300,000 square foot building on nine acres, basically in your downtown area. The Bennington Planning Commission and the select board, town staff, has worked hard in redesigning its land use and development regulations, and it paid a lot of attention to the zoning designation in the vicinity of the Energizer facility. And under the new land use regulations, this is in an MU or mixed-use-two district, and any of the permitted uses, which I'll run through in a minute, in just a moment, and any combination are allowed in this, in the property. I think, I think the planning commission and the town in general did a very good job here in trying to balance the recognition that this is a BMS property located in a largely residential area, a current manufacturing use, and a place where you would not put a manufacturing use today, with the fact that this is a key building very proximate to the downtown. So I think a lot of flexibility here in the redevelopment opportunities, while trying to be respectful of the neighborhood in which this property is situated. So, for example, current uses under the MU2, or allowed uses with just administrative review, are housing with no unit or density limitations, food, drink and entertainment, lodging, personal and professional services, and retail. And to some degree or another, all of those have some limitations, but they're all allowed with simply administrative review. Other, other uses which would require DRB approval include residential care facilities, educational facilities, and manufacturing. So interesting that what had been the previous use would now require DRB approval to, for manufacturing to go back in there. And no public parking or transit facilities are allowed at this property. So if you had an opportunity to look at the plan at all, you'll see that it is pretty thick with, with data, demographic data, economic data, and then of course, the, the market study throughout. So I just wanted to provide just a really high level kind of touch points to contextualize the study, beginning here with the demographic context of what is known as Census Track 9712. So Bennington's made up of four census tracks. 9712 is our quote-unquote downtown census tract, incorporates much of downtown, and, and in this case, also includes the Energizer property. So this chart looks at that census tract vis a vis townwide information. You'll see that it represents about a third of the population. The median age is slightly older than the town as a whole. Median household income is about 15% lower than the town as a whole. Poverty rate's about 20% higher, and it's much more, there's a much greater percentage of renters living in downtown as opposed to townwide, not surprising. And therefore, there's many more people living in multi-unit properties in downtown. Next, we'll look at the demographic context with regard to income. And this is, this is townwide. And I think really, one important aspect, thing to point out here is the fact that the median household income in Bennington over the past eight years, or the eight years covered here from 2011 to 2019, went up by about 28.2% versus 17.2% for the CPI. So the median household income in Bennington over that course of time was about 40% higher than the CPI, which obviously is very positive news for, for our community. Not surprisingly, owners tend to out-earn renters. However, what we found during that eight-year period is that renters are really beginning to close the gap. The median household income for owners grew 11% over that time, whereas renters' household income grew by about 40%. Again, this is townwide, which potentially reflects people moving into the community before they anchor here and having kind of a higher level of job potentially. But what we did notice is, again, looking back at that census tract, downtown is missing out to a certain degree. Both renters and homeowners in the downtown area tend to make less than... Both renters and homeowners in the downtown area tend to make less than people who live outside of downtown. Looking at kind of market trends with regard to residential properties, which Dan's working on bringing up here, not surprisingly at all, and this is kind of countywide data, we see over the past 10 years, a pretty steady rise in, in the cost, the rental rates over the, the course of that time, almost a steady line from 2011 to 2021, not just the gray bars. And you see a declining, in general, that dotted green line, declining vacancy rate. So anecdotally, we hear how difficult it is to find an apartment and how expensive it is, that's certainly reflected here. And again, keep in mind, this reflects the county, not just Bennington town, but countywide, we hear that, and we see it here. On the flip side, and as it pertains to redevelopment of the Energizer property, that presents some real opportunity, declining market rates, higher rental rate, declining vacancy rates, higher rental rates, present more opportunity from a development perspective. Same story on residential, I think we've all seen it, we've all felt it, we've all heard it, in particular, over the past couple of years, but there's been a dramatic home rise, dramatic rise in home prices in 2020 into 2021, this, and in particular, the last two years. Now again, this is county data. What was, the median sale price in Bennington County for a home in May 2021 was 330,000, in May 2019, two years prior, was 258,000, representing an increase of 28%. So we hear a lot about, you know, oh, the mountain towns, and they're driving a lot of that, and a lot of people relocated to the pandemic, to the more mountainous, more affluent areas of the county, and that, that is true, that happened. What I think was surprising to us is this slide, and what really happened with regard to property, residential property within the downtown area. In downtown Bennington, over that same time period, the price increase was 63%. So you're seeing some real, real pressures with regard to housing, and I think that comes as, as a surprise to no one. As we do with these types of redevelopment studies, we, we look for a number of opportunities to gain public input into this document. One of those was a public meeting that we held in July with about 35 people, and what came out of that meeting was certainly broad support for a variety of housing uses, uses at the Energizer facility, including workforce, senior, market rate, and an interesting kind of concept of cohousing, which is a cluster of privately owned, private units with shared communal spaces like kitchens or recreational facilities. Other uses mentioned at the public meeting of interest to people potentially at the site were experiential food and beverage, light manufacturing and assembly, educational uses, and childcare. And it won't be the last time you hear about childcare, which we all know to be a crisis and, and a critical need in the community. There was also a survey put out to the community, we had about 130 responses, which is really, I think, pretty positive for this type of survey in the community, and again, housing came out far and away as the, what people would like to see in terms of, and felt was the best reuse of a substantial portion of the Energizer facility, 70% of the people in the survey noted housing. And you can see the types of housing there by popularity, low and moderate income, workforce, senior, and market. Other popular possible reuses for the facility included community space, retail and commercial, light manufacturing and office, and those were the top five, there are other uses below there, but those were the ones mentioned by 30% or more of the respondents. Not surprisingly, when we did a variety of stakeholder interviews, talking to 10 or a dozen of community leaders and residents in kind of different areas of the community, business leaders, not-for-profit leaders, developers, and kind of community representatives, again, we saw this critical need for housing, and the recognition that there's a severe mismatch between the types of housing needed and the types of housing available in the community. There was noted a severe lack of quality market rate housing, the fact that it's often difficult for new workers moving to the area to find adequate housing, and then a pretty ample discussion about how increasingly people are seeing that retirees are attracted to Bennington, and perhaps relatedly, there's a significant need for additional senior housing in Bennington. Other things noted was the potential interest in small-scale industrial at the site, flexible, flexible office space, and again, this notion and need for childcare. So what, what are the key conclusions? Taking kind of all of that data, looking at best practices in other communities, what other communities may have done with similar, I don't know that there are exactly, exactly the same types of properties in other communities, 300,000 square feet, manufacturing use in a residential area, but near your downtown, it's a pretty unique property. But taking all of those things, plus the public input, there were some key conclusions that came out of the study. First, the Energizer facility is, you know, despite its age, in really sound structural condition, and suitable for a variety of uses, which align with its current mixed-use zoning. Despite the stable population numbers in Bennington, Bennington is experiencing a critical housing shortage. So we know our population hasn't changed dramatically in the last 30-plus years, but there is a severe need for additional housing, and different types of housing. In particular, the housing stock in Bennington is unable to meet the needs of the LMI workforce, that's low and moderate income workforce, young professionals, and seniors, and there appears to be strongest housing demand for market rate apartments, independent and assisted living units, townhouse or condos in an ownership model, and income sensitized apartments. And here's the, kind of the big takeaway number. So across Bennington, there's a need for approximately, housing need for approximately 600 renter households and 450 homeowner households. So now you're saying, whoa, wait a minute, 1,000 new units in Bennington? Not necessarily. What this represents is the recognition that there's some type of mismatch in terms of cost, quality, or size between the current housing that people have, and the people, type of housing that would be most adequate for them. So maybe they're in too big a space if they're looking to downsize, maybe they're in too small a space, maybe it's not of the appropriate quality, or perhaps, most often, they're paying too much for it to be affordable, either as renters, and less often as homeowners. So 1,000-plus units, but a number of ways to get there. Yes, some of those are likely and will need to be new units, but they could also be made up of rehab units, simply improving the quality of existing units, or retrofitting units, making large units smaller, small units larger. So there's a number of ways to attack this need for 1,000 homeowners, 1,000 different households, but certainly some new build will be required. Again, I mentioned at the beginning, we looked at this, and again, this is townwide, this is across the town, looking, kind of dialing in a little more specifically at the property, there's an estimated development potential at the Energizer facility for about 235 rental units and 135 homeowner units, made up primarily of new build condominium-type units, probably built on one of those parcels that I noted, and, and most likely, the parcel along the river to the east of the, the building, south of Scott Street. And then we, we found some non-resident, non-residential demand in the project, in the property, most likely would be strongest for experiential food and beverage, indoor recreation, convenience retailer grocery serving both the property, the new people living there, and the neighborhood, potentially lodging, and then again, there was some possibility for some really small, light, small-scale manufacturing, perhaps shared type of, of space, similar to what the Maker Space is doing at the middle school. And then finally, there was just an example of what a reuse concept might look like. This was a mixed-income residential community, which included a variety of housing units for market, market housing units, workforce, low and moderate income, and senior on the rental side, and then some townhouse condos, and you'll see kind of in that purple area there would probably be the new build for townhouse and condos, that would be in an ownership model, and then about 5,000 square feet of retail to serve both the property and the neighborhood. So this is, you know, simply to give somebody looking at this and picking up this study who might be a developer, just to kind of get the juices flowing about what might fit there and what could be a good fit for the community. There, if you look into the study, there are two other redevelopment scenarios, not, not at this level, but a different mix of prospective units and uses, and some feasibility analyses, really just kind of back-of-napkin cost of build versus potential revenue from, from those uses. And that's what made up the Energizer reuse study. So be happy to answer any, any questions.
I've got a couple of questions, Bill. Thank you for coming, firstly. And as far as this goes, where is this being advertised, and is there a particular market or markets?
Yeah, so, thanks for raising, thanks for raising that point, Jim. I think, you know, looking at David's prior presentation and about the town being proactive, really, in this particular case, I, I think the town has been proactive in undertaking the study. I think what we have to recognize here is that this is a privately-held facility being marketed by a national real estate entity, and there's really very little that the town can do beyond this. Now that said, I, I have received contact from a development entity that is not locally based, which has come across the study, and wants to have a follow-up discussion later this month to see what the opportunities might be, but we're not specifically advertising this, that's being held by Energizer and its kind of hired people.
That's great, you know, and I was really pleased to hear you mention that, you know, there's a probability, possibility of condos going in there, and I think that would be fantastic, because as you and I learned, and many others, there's, there's a real housing shortage. And people, you know, by and large, they'd like to own their own property instead of renting indefinitely, so I was pleased to hear that.
Great. Other questions? Yes, Gene?
That was a great presentation, thank you. I'm just curious, the location of this property is, it's just fabulous for housing, and I was wondering, in addition to the shortage, is the, was the location part of the driving force, why housing rose to the top?
Well, I think there's a number of reasons housing rose to the top, and so it's a great question, and again, I hate to keep harkening back to David White's presentation, but he is the pro, and he works all over the state and the country, and he very clearly said, and we certainly found in Putnam, that in these types of redevelopment, housing is what tends to quote-unquote pay the bills. It's where more money per square foot can be derived than really frankly, any other use, so that's one. Secondly, it's, everything around the Energizer is residential. Yes, it's been a manufacturing facility, it is not a location, given the residential nature, given the difficulties in accessing that property for large vehicles, it's, it's not a place you would ever put manufacturing again today. And third, housing tends to, tends to bring the availability of subsidy in a variety of forms that makes development more, more possible. So need, location, opportunity, kind of all coalesce around the suggestion that housing should be, you know, at least a significant, if major, component of, of the redevelopment.
Yeah, and anecdotally, my son, who's 34, has been living in New York City for the last 11 years, he's been working remotely since March of 2020, and I think he's leaving the city and coming back to Vermont, and he said, why am I living in Brooklyn, paying a fortune when I can work in Vermont and, you know, commute, and I think he's not alone.
Yeah. No, I mean, we certainly saw during the pandemic, and, you know, people are making lifestyle choices, and, you know, places like Bennington certainly become very attractive when you have the opportunity to, to make those choices.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks.
Sure, you're welcome.
Sarah, do you have any questions? No? Bruce?
Thanks, thanks, Bill, for the great presentation. You mentioned, or I would wonder if you could speak a little bit about what you found with regard to the need for remediation in the, in, on the property itself, environmental remediation in particular, that might stand in the way of certain kind of development?
Thanks, thanks very much for that question. Obviously, 50-plus years of manufacturing use, that, you know, instantly becomes, becomes a concern, particularly manufacturing of, of batteries and transistors and those types of things. The good news is Energizer has been a spectacular steward of that property and a really responsible corporate citizen. So they have done everything that they've been asked to do by the EPA, by Vermont DEC in terms of managing the environmental aspects of that property. So we're really optimistic that there's not a big bill awaiting somebody there. Further good news is, there's an ongoing entity, Energizer, continues to operate nationwide and worldwide, and as long as that's the case, the cleanup would be, to the extent there is any, would be their responsibility. So when you're doing this type of cleanup, you need a liable and viable entity, Energizer is both, so I don't think environmental concerns in any way inhibit the redevelopment of the property.
That's, that's helpful news for the public. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Other questions from the board? That was, that was an excellent presentation, and, you know, I think it's, it's great that even though this is private property, that we have as much information as we do about it, I, I think we were all curious. So even though we can't, even though we can't really act on this, because it's private, it's a, it's a private property, I think it's useful for us to know this. And it also, I think, the housing study element of it is incredibly useful, so I am just so pleased that we were able to do that.
Well, thank you, and absolutely, the housing component of this, which is a standalone component, is absolutely immediately actionable. I mean, there's already people who are taking this information and looking at it, we've heard anecdotally, we've read in the paper about potential housing developments, you know, this is all beneficial to them, and ultimately, doing this amount of legwork could be beneficial to the redevelopment of, of the site as a whole.
Yes.
Thanks very much.
Well, I want to ask, are there, is there anyone in the audience who has a question or comment about Bill's presentation? All right.
Thank you.
Then, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, and then, to round out our very data-rich evening, Steve Love is here to discuss the town audit.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. All right, so you can go ahead, well, go ahead to the first slide if you would. And I always like to start out by reminding everybody in the Select Board that the responsibility for the financial statements really do rest with town management and the Select Board. You're responsible for preparing the financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and for making sure that you have appropriate internal controls in place relevant to preparing them accurate financial statements. Go on to the next slide. Our responsibility as your auditors is just to express an opinion on the financial statements based on our audit, and we need to perform procedures to verify that the amounts and disclosures in the statements are accurate, we have to assess the risk of material misstatement in there, and we also consider internal controls in order to design our testing. So once we did all that, we came to the conclusion that the financial statements of the town of Bennington for the year ended June 30, 2021 are presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We also have a report on internal controls and compliance, and we noted no material weaknesses in internal control. So that's all good news, it's a clean bill of health, if you will. The financial statements are really made up of two sections, one is the government-wide statements, and those are the-
Can I stop? Is it poss, it's really hard to hear with conversations going on. Deb? Deb, is it possible to step out if you're going to have a conversation? Thank you. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I could be, I'm not used to talking through this.
It's hard, yeah.
That's the room.
So with the financials, the, the first section is the government-wide statements that really came about with Gatsby 34 many years ago now, but what that does is it presents the activities of the town in two main sections, the governmental activities and the business-type activities. And the distinction there is there, all of the government activities are in one state, one column, all of the business-type- all of the business-type activities in another. And for the governmental funds, they're different from the fund financial statements in that all of the assets and liabilities of the town are recorded in the government-wide statements. So whereas in the fund statements, the general fund doesn't show long-term debt, it doesn't show capital assets, in the government-wide, those are all brought into the financials. So looking at the slide there, obviously, and this is the governmental side, capital assets, these are net capital assets of 18.2 million, are the most significant assets of the town. Internal balances are actually a negative, almost 7 million, because all of the cash in the town is deposited in the general fund. So typically, they due to other funds for their pieces of the pie, if you will. Our cash is at 9.4 million this year, which is up pretty significantly from the prior year, probably just about $1 million more. There's a few reasons for that. Capital assets were pretty consistent with the prior year. And actually, some of our long-term debt has increased, well, that's going to be on the next slide, I'm sorry. So property taxes receivable, again, a big chunk of our assets. I'm sorry, you go ahead. So for the liabilities and net position, net position, capital assets, that's what our equity, if you will, is invested in capital assets to the tune of 12.8 million. The net pension liability and deferred inflows, so that's related to the pensions and the other post-employment benefits. That's one area of the liabilities that did increase fairly significantly this year, about, just about a million. And again, that's really out of the town's control. That comes from Beamers. It's all based on how the statewide pension funds are going. So you really can't control that. Our bonds and notes payable stayed fairly consistent to the prior year. We did have some additional borrowing this year for the pumper for about $1,067. And we also borrowed for some highway equipment as well. So those are the main pieces there. And anyone who has any questions, anyway, along the way, stop, I'm trying to move right along because we do have a hockey game tonight. Sorry. Here as long as we need to. So for the business-type activities, again, they don't really, and only really show their business-type activities on this slide because, in the fund statements, the presentation's basically the same. They always show their assets or all of their assets and all of their liabilities, be they short-term or long-term. So the capital assets actually had a pretty significant increase this year to 35.2 million. Last year, that was probably closer to, oh, about 29 million. And the lion's share of that was because of the sewer or the water line extensions that were actually a capital contribution to the water fund as a result of the PFOA settlements. So largely funded by state and private sources. So in total, the financial, total assets of the business-type activities went from 35.5 million to 44.6 million. So a pretty dramatic increase in the assets we've got invested in capital for the business-type activities. For liabilities and net position, actually, the indebtedness did not really change other than for the Beamers. The bonds payable stayed pretty consistent, actually reduced some, just paying off borrowings rather than increasing. Cash and other liability or accounts payable and accrued liability stayed pretty much the same. And again, the net investment in capital assets, that increased almost $9 million compared to the prior year between our investments and the state funding. So moving on to the governmental activities, again, this is still on the overall, on the government-wide statements. So as you can see, the police is probably one of the bigger chunks, not is probably, it is one of the bigger chunks. General government is the largest share of expenditures. And highways and roads, actually, highways and roads is the largest. And you can see how they're, what pieces of the pie they make up. As far as changes this year, the, I guess, public safety, general government, that has increased about 8% this year, and public safety about 12% compared to last year. Community development was down, but that's largely a function of pass-through money from we get from the state and then what we lend out there. And recreation stayed about the same, and highways and roads increased about 10% this year compared to last year.
Can I ask a question about that? Public safety, oh, because that includes fire, it's police and fire, is that-
Yeah, actually, the-
Because police went down.
Yeah, police was down about 50,000, just about 1%. Fire was up about 12%.
Got it, okay. Yep.
And yet, the police is the larger piece of the pie of those two.
Okay, thank you.
So again, as far as our sources of revenue, the property taxes, obviously, the largest piece, and we'll go a little bit later in the presentation, we'll look at some of those trends in the revenues. But that tends to be increasing on the average, a little less than 5% per year, but we'll see that. Some of our program-type revenues that don't really show up in this, well, they do there. So the operating grants and capital grants are what we pay for things before we start charging for property taxes. And general grants at 500,000. Charges for services make up a fair bit at 605,000. And then miscellaneous revenues about 860,000. Overall, I would say the total revenue has increased about, just about 900,000. And while last year we had a decrease in net position of 150,800, this year it was 59,600. So on the government-wide side, where it pulls in the effective pensions and OPEB, we did still come out negative, but not nearly as negative as last year. So positive all around so far. So the cost of services on the business-type activities now, pretty even between water and sewer, and then parking at 20,000, basically. Water expenditures went up approximately 7.5%. And sewer stayed pretty well even at about 1%. Parking is rather insignificant. We'll talk about parking again a little bit later. So for the statement of activities, the revenues of business-type activities, again, they're largely funded by charges for services, almost entirely actually. And that brings us to one discussion item, which is the parking fund. Originally, the parking fund was funded by parking meters primarily. So it really met the definition of a proprietary fund where it was intended to be funded by user-source revenue. That's kind of gone by the wayside. So as we discussed that with management this year, we thought it was appropriate to perhaps discontinue it as a proprietary fund and bring it into the general fund. Because right now, that little bit of revenue they get there is basically from fines as opposed to user charges.
It's derived from what?
Basically from fines. Traffic fines, tickets.
Parking and-
Yeah. It comes back from the state to the town. So that's the primary source of revenue, which really doesn't meet the definition of a proprietary fund. What that would mean is be a residual equity transfer from the parking fund to the general fund. That would be a little over 200,000 on the fund financials. It would be increased to almost 400,000 on the government-wide statements because the assets of the parking fund would show up on the government-wide statements, but not the fund statements. Little tricky concept there. And this slide does not show, these are all the regular revenues. What's not included on this is the water capital contribution that we talked about earlier, and that was a little over 7.7 million, so. So now we're, yeah.
Is it okay to ask a question?
Oh, sure.
Yeah. I have to admit that I didn't much get much of what the downside would be, if there was one, in ordinary language, to moving the parking fund into the general fund calculation instead of-
There's really no downside. Currently, the parking fund is, gets operating transfers from the general fund for about 20,000 or so a year.
Yeah.
It's not generating revenue, so it really doesn't fit the definition of a proprietary fund as it once did. So there's really absolutely no downside. Actually, there's a plus in that it adds to the fund balance of the general fund to the tune of the due-to-from, which gets eliminated, which is a little over 200,000. And on the government-wide statements, those assets would just be reported with the general fund assets, so.
So Steve, you're actually encouraging us to do that, yeah.
It would be, it's really kind of the right thing to do to get in line with GAAP now.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
And should be, you know, a motion of the board presumably to tell management, please, tell your auditor-
Please do that.
Do that and have your auditor give this blessing, so.
I think that can be accomplished.
All right. So again, this year, cash is at 8.7 million, and that's up pretty substantially from 5.9 million at the end of last year, about a 48% increase in cash. Part of that is our borrowing for the pumper truck. We got money before year-end, but we did not get our pumper truck yet. So we'll have an expenditure, we'll take that the other way next year. Some of the other variances, very, pretty consistent on the delinquent taxes receivable, prepaid expenses up about 17%, but again, they're pretty well negligible in the other current assets there. So again, cash and receivables are your big assets on the fund financials. As far as the liabilities, again, due to other funds is a big piece, followed by accounts payable and accrued liabilities and deferred inflows of financial resources. That basically is a fancy word for general fund property taxes that were not collected within 60 days of year-end, so. The, as far as the variances there, nothing really too significant, and that's pretty much how the liabilities go. So as far as your fund balance goes, then under GAAP, we report that in five categories, non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned or unassigned, and that's all based on, to the extent there's outside constraints on it or board-imposed constraints. The restricted fund balance of the town is over 3.2 million. The committed at 247,000, assigned at 26,000, and there's an unassigned deficit of 40,000. And we'll have a slide later that shows you all the pieces of the restricted fund balance. And those restrictions, again, are, restricted fund balance is typically outside of the select board's choice. That's from quoted appropriations that haven't been spent and that sort of thing. So that's the fund balance. And here's the next slide already. So as you can see, the, I mean, that just gives you the detail of all of the pieces of the fund balance that are restricted. Again, I mentioned earlier that the part of a reason our cash is up is we have money for the ladder truck, and that's down there on the right. That's a big increase in the restricted fund balance this year. And presumably, I'm not sure how quickly that truck's coming in, but that will disappear. We're hoping the truck will be here in February or March now, I think it is. We had looked at the latter part of January, but we're not sure that's going to hold true. So just so how that'll flow on the fund financial statements, that will be an expenditure when you get the truck, so you're going to have a pretty big hit to fund balance, but it will come out of that piece of restricted fund balance, so. Any questions on the restricted fund balance pieces?
It may, the one that doesn't seem to me to make any sense, or at least I can anticipate what it would mean, is town clerk restoration. I can think of all sorts of things, but I'm sure they don't, that's not what they mean.
Perhaps better worded is town clerk record restoration?
Yes.
Oh, it's the records. Thank you.
We don't believe the town clerk needs any restoration.
No. Thank God Cassie's gone, but it's the records. Gotcha. That really makes a lot more sense to me.
Hey, Steve? Hey, Steve? Applegate has been renamed to Orchard Village.
Okay. If I don't mark it now, I'll forget by next year. All right, so general fund revenues. So you've got a pretty good pie chart there that shows that property taxes are clearly our biggest piece of revenue, followed by intergovernmental revenues, and that's primarily state with some federal funding as well. And what else to note? Permits and licenses are always pretty consistent at about 100,000. As far as this year's variances, just looking at, I have cheat sheets that I attached to mine, the property taxes went up about 4.8%. Our permits and licenses actually did increase about 25%, although they're a very small piece of the pie. And intergovernmental revenues were up about 7.9% for the year. And on the next slide, we'll see a trend of those. I promise next year we'll get rid of the Hurricane Irene grants and assistance, that's getting pretty dated now. Those were from 2015 and 16. But as you can see, and we, pretty much fees and charges and some of the smaller ones stay pretty consistent. The property taxes are on a steady increase. I did look at the percentages over five years, and while this year was 4.76% over five years, if you average it out, it's 3.3% per year. Intergovernmental revenue, again, that varies a little bit more year to year, but averaged over five years, that's increased by 14.6%. And other revenues tend to fluctuate quite a bit, but they're a pretty small piece of the pie. As far as general fund expenditures, we can see the big pieces, public safety, highways and roads, and general government are making up the lion's share. Health and welfare, always a tiny sliver. Debt management at 635,000. We did get some help this year on that in that we had some forgiveness or, not forgiveness of interest on long-term debt, but forbearance for the year due to the COVID. So again, we've had a pretty successful year financially, partly due to some COVID things, as well as just other pieces of how it's played out. Looking at the variances there, again, general government was up about 9%. Public Works up about 11.5%. And our public safety was only increased about 2.3% for the year. Recreation was actually up about 32% for 226,000. We did have, and it doesn't show on this slide because it's not revenue, but other financing sources, we did have proceeds from issuance of debt that increased our fund balance. Again, that was 1,388,000. That was ladder truck and highway equipment, basically.
Right.
Can you explain 1,662,000 covers under, oh, there?
Not without all my detail.
Look at the budget.
So I can't off the top of my head, I didn't bring a detailed trial balance with me, so. All right?
That's right.
All right, as far as our trend in expenditures, you can see it graphically there. The, again, just looking at, I did, looking at the five years there, the current year general government was up 9%, but averaged over five years was 5.23. Public safety up 2.3% this year, but a moving average over five years of 3.65. Recreation was up 32% this year, averaged over five years only 3.9%. And highways and roads actually went down this year, 1.6%, but averaged over five years a 7% increase. You're ahead of me. Damn, trying to get me off the podium. Okay. So that's basically it for the financial presentation. We do have other required communications, the SAS 115 letter, just where we're supposed to tell those committed or charged with governance, we need to disclose these, that management is responsible for the selection of the accounting principles. And we did not notice any, or did not note any transactions entered into by the town that weren't, lacked authoritative guidance. And we would note that all significant transactions have been recognized in the statements and that the accounting estimates that are integral in the financial statements, be they reserved for uncollectible taxes or allowance for depreciation, are reasonable and properly determined. We did not, you can go to the next slide, we encountered no difficulties in the audit as usual. And in dealing with management, they're always very helpful to us. When we make requests, we get what we need, and we need in a timely manner. As far as uncorrected misstatements during any audit, you're going to find some things that need adjustment, but management has made all of those adjustments. And largely, those are pretty minor, and some of the adjustments that we make were brought to our attention by management where things had come up after they closed the books and handed them over to us. And next slide, we had no disagreements with management. We would be required to let you know if that were the case. And as far as we knew, there was no consultation with other independent accountants, as it looked like opinion shopping, seeing, oh, if we don't like what left company is saying, let's look, see what somebody else will give us something we like better. So that's it.
Wonderful. All right, so, thank you. Any-
Any other questions? And I'm wondering, can Sarah come back? Sarah in the sky. See if she has any questions.
Can I see Sarah?
There she is.
There she is. Sarah, did you have any questions?
No, I don't. This is very awkward. Thank you.
All right, great. Any questions from the audience? No?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we have those fines or fees brought into the general fund going forward.
The parking?
Yeah.
Parking fund?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. So, okay. Any further discussion on that? No? All right, all in favor?
Anything from management? Does that seem fine to you?
No, I, we worked with Love Cody for a number of years. The parking fund issue has been troublesome for our finance director, because it truly, the way we fund it now is not really a proprietary fund, as Steve has adequately pointed out. So I think it is appropriate to move it into the general fund. We're very much in favor of doing that.
Great.
All right, so with that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Sarah, did you vote?
Could you repeat that motion? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
So the motion is to move the parking fund into the general fund.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you very much. All right.
That was something I didn't hear.
Perfectly understand.
Awesome. That's the first time we've had a motion resulting from the, other than accepting the audit.
Great, thank you. That was fun. All right, thank you so much, as always. It's very, very helpful to have you walk us through this.
All right, well, I went through it kind of quickly, so I hope not too quickly. But we appreciate being able to work with the town. And again, you should appreciate the fact that your town manager and your finance director are doing a pretty good job in making our life easier when it comes to completing the audit, so.
Yes. Do we need to accept this?
Yeah, do we need a motion?
Do we need a motion to accept this?
I believe we need a formal motion to accept the audit.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. All right, then thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to, I'd like to publicly thank Melissa and Stu, too.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
Ditto.
All right, well, we finally have come to public comment, and I, we have one person up. Jenny Dour, please come on up.
Hi, everybody. My brain hurts. I don't know about you. So I'm here to just deliver some nice, good news. First of all, I don't know if you, everyone read my piece in the banner, but I do certainly know that Walgreens is called Walgreens and no longer called Rite Aid. So I am publicly mea culpa. It is Walgreens, is one of our downtown drugstores. We are deliberately leaving the holiday decorations up. Decided that, we decided that we need some cheer in this time when everyone's kind of blue and depressed, and January is already rough enough when it all ends. So we are leaving them up through the month of January as a sign of hope. A few shops are opening up. The Angry Egg will be opening in the next couple of months. The Coffee Bar is almost ready. I walked in, it is gorgeous. The Village Garage Distillery is also almost open. If you haven't taken a look at that, you can peek through the windows. Also absolutely beautiful. 514 Pop-Up Shop has extended their stay, so that's great news. This is a great one. Hemmings Cruisin's are coming back this year. Jennifer and I spoke, Jennifer Sandquest, who runs them, and they do one Thursday a month in, from May to August. So there are going to be four of them. But the great news for us is that it's going to come to downtown instead of the Hemmings parking lot.
Awesome. Oh, that's great.
So it's going to be on Main Street. I don't have the actual dates, but I will get them out. I mean, I know them, but I don't have them written down. So Main Street, they're going to park the cars in diagonally. And I had a lovely meeting with our police department this morning, and they are all for this. So they will be closing down Main Street for those, that event, from North Street to School Street. And if it's hugely successful, we may extend that to Silver Street later on. And the local antique dealers will be invited to put up pop-up tents in the middle of it. So we'll be cross-promoting Hemmings Cruisin's with an antiques celebration, since we have so many of those here.
Will you have food there as well?
Sorry?
Food?
Well, we have restaurants, so we'll, they'll be encouraged to have some outdoor seating and perhaps bring some of their food outside. So we're not going to be having food vendors from outside. We'd rather gear them, steer them to our downtown fooderies. Any other questions?
Awesome. That's wonderful.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny.
All right. So then, up next is the mask resolution discussion. We have this on the agenda every two weeks. And as I said earlier, the 45-day, the first 45 days for our current resolution runs through our next select board meeting. So at the next meeting, we will need to determine whether we want to let it just expire, whether we want to do the same thing, whether we want to do something that is, you know, more or less stringent. I will say for me, I have been extremely disappointed at the number of businesses that have not put up the signs, requesting, strongly recommending that individuals wear masks. And that, in large part, some of the very businesses that wanted to have the flexibility to determine their own masking decisions, didn't put the signs up, so.
Right.
That's concerning.
Jeannie, I should mention that extensions can only be for 30 days at a time?
Yes, it will be. Yes, so the next, so when we discuss it next time, we'll be making a decision on what the next 30 days should look like. Anyone else have anything that they want to mention on that? All right. Okay, so then implementing the town's vision. I think the only thing we have to say at this point is that the procedures for the spring policies should be going up soon. We're, we should get information from the chief this week on what that, what that timeline looks like. And then we have, the task force has one more meeting before they will be putting together recommendations to the board. Oh, Sarah, did you have a question, a comment?
No, I just have a comment on the mask discussion.
Oh, sorry.
It was brief, but so there's a discussion in legislature. I guess there's a bill that's being presented. I'm not sure where that's at right now. I'm hoping that that may be in the works, people decide something, or we talk about something, but I don't know. I just wanted to mention that. And yeah, it's, I know we're struggling with this, so I'm hoping that there's a decision made there, but that they have a lot more information than we do.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Yes, I think many of us are, believe that a statewide decision would.
Be helpful.
Be helpful. Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so I think that brings us to the manager's report.
Thank you. I have three action items for you tonight. The first is relatively straightforward. It's the certificate of highway mileage. This is what determines the amount of money that the state will send us on an annual basis, which at the present time is just over $200,000 annually that goes into the highway fund. As you recall, we discontinued two very short roadways this year. The Brookside Drive, Entry Drive, and Town Highway 29, which was formerly known as the Foothills. We have included that reduction on the certificate, and we will attach the minutes of those meetings to confirm for the state that the board has taken this action. It does bring in, took us into compliance with some issues the state had raised for us, having to do with E-911 and the resolution of the Town Highway 29 issue, which was a driveway that we were not maintaining, but somehow had become a talent highway many years ago. So I will circulate this for signatures. There are six signature lines available. Normally, there are only five, but the state is becoming more flexible. Most towns in Vermont are three or five select board, right at the bottom where the blue is. Are three or five select board numbers. Bennington is unique in that we have seven. So of course we are. So that does not require a vote, just signatures. The second will require a vote, as I have indicated here. Given the time constraints, I authorized our attorneys in the opioid lawsuits to issue a settlement agreement with Janssen, which is a manufacturer, a smaller manufacturer of opioids, and three large distributors. I won't get into who they are. The interesting part of this settlement is that the distributor's monies, which are about 26 billion, will be paid out over 18 years. So you can imagine what that will look like. The Janssen settlement will be 22.8 billion. That will be paid out over nine years. Those monies that are coming to the state of Vermont, out of all of that, almost 49 billion dollars, will be about 65 million dollars that comes to the state of Vermont. The timing of how that comes to the state of Vermont, I would have to say God probably is the only one that knows. But of those funds, Bennington is slated to receive 2.48% of those monies. Every town in Vermont will benefit by this settlement. There is a lengthy chart of how that is broken out, and it's by populations, per capita. That 2.48%, you think is a pretty small number. Out of 65 million, it's 1.6 million dollars that will come to Bennington. That, in the past, we have, we have indicated that we will be using that for relief from the COVID experience. It can go into any kind of treatment, housing, recovery housing, recovery programs. So that's where we will set up a reserve when those monies start to flow, and we'll handle that. So I would need a motion from the board to ratify the decision I made to authorize the settlement.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And the last is a community development requirement. The state of Vermont, through its community development department, adopts a number of policies. In this case, there's an equal employment opportunity policy, a fair housing policy. Let me try to get through these quickly without stumbling too badly. A oversight monitoring policy, a use of excessive force policy, which is new. A policy on the use of community development funds for federal lobbying, which says you won't do that. And then a code of ethics, as well as whistleblower protection and texting while driving. All, some of these policies reflect the laws that the state of Vermont has implemented, and these policies have been amended. And when they are amended, every town that looks to utilize community development block grant funds must also agree to the amendment. So I have for you, should you decide to do so, and we would need a motion to do that, there is a signature page that is attached, and I would circulate that for signature once you folks have adopted those attached policies.
Make a motion to adopt the attached policies and sign where noted.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Great.
Fantastic. Thank you. And then the last piece, I mentioned this, I think, during the budget process. But every year, the state of Vermont provides us with an equalization study. This is what is used to determine state aid to education. But it's also a measure of how well our level of appraisal is running and how close our properties are to one another in a given neighborhood. That's called the coefficient of dispersion. This year, because of the housing market, our CLA, the common level of appraisal, dropped from 94% down to 85.4%. That's almost a 10% drop. If we drop below 80%, we must do a reappraisal. The coefficient of dispersion rose from around 16% to 17.6%. If we surpass 20% on the coefficient of dispersion, we must do a reappraisal. So there are two triggers to causing a town-wide reappraisal. You would have noted during the budget audit presentation that in reserve are 730-some-odd thousand dollars set aside for a town-wide reappraisal. Those monies come to us on an annual basis from the state of approximately 45 to 50,000 dollars a year. I don't have it right off the top of my head. And those monies have been into a reserve every year. So if the property market continues as it has, we may be facing a reappraisal next year, or certainly the year after. One of those numbers is going to tip the scale. And so we should be ready for that, but we have the funds set aside for it, should it happen.
Great. All right, well, I'm glad we're, we're prepared.
I think we are.
Yes, that's good.
And that's all I have.
All right, well, and then I do just want to reiterate that you have worked with the library so that there should be a paper copy of the packet available to anyone who would like to read it on paper as opposed to accessing it online.
And we'll be doing, we'll be doing that on a two-week basis. So when, when the packet is ready, we'll be distributing one to the library.
Excellent.
And the, and the copies of the agendas?
Copy of the agendas are on the back table.
Are over, right, are over there, okay.
Yep.
Yep.
Perfect. That's great. Thank you. All right, then upcoming agendas. Shall we, so what we have coming up on the next agenda, let's see. That includes our discussion of priorities, economic development and infrastructure priorities. It also includes our next mask resolution discussion. We will have the budget, right? We will need to, you'll have.
We, yes, we'll be looking to adopt the budget and sign the warning.
Okay.
So it's a two-step process. You basically have concluded your work on the budget. We're now finalizing it with the changes that you made at, through the budget process. And we'll have a whole new document for you, and we'll have the warning prepared for your signatures at that time.
Stuart, will that include the decision to move it not to have Zoom March meeting or not?
Uh, it could.
Is it?
I was, I know that the legislature is allowing some change. I think there's no reason for us not to hold our meeting on March 1. We may do it by virtual, by Zoom, depending on how, how we're doing with the Omicron variant.
Right, and whether the legislature allows that. If we can be completely, I mean, we struggle with, I mean, there's some clear limitations to doing a hybrid meeting. We're having difficulty even with one or two people up there in terms of them really being able to participate. So if we can go completely virtual, that makes a huge difference. So hopefully, we'll know by then. We'll see.
And then we're also going to have a presentation by the chief of police.
Yes, and so Bennington Police Department presentation. And I'm assuming they'll still have a written, their monthly written comments as well.
Oh, yes, that'll be, that'll be part of the packet. That, that is scheduled along with any pathway changes that have been made.
Right. Dan, there won't be anything that quickly that we need to do for TIF, is there?
No, we probably have it here in February.
Okay.
Yeah, I hope to have everything ready for you folks by mid-February so we can have that meeting, that last meeting. so we can have that meeting, that last meeting in February so we can get the application for the TIFs by March.
Okay, but that's good to have, so the second meeting in February might be when we.
Because that's the latest.
Yeah, okay.
The second meeting in February is the Monday before Tuesday, the 1st of March.
We need to have this in by the end of March.
I know that, I'm just saying, don't we normally, we, I mean, if, I don't have my calendars open, but I believe I do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Even if it's a special meeting. I would think it would be a special meeting because the 28th would be our town meeting, would it not?
Yes.
If Tuesday is the first, and that's the date of the election, there is, we are compressed to.
Well, the second meeting in February is actually the 21st.
Okay.
So we can have a regular select board meeting, and then with the floor meeting would follow on the following Monday.
Right.
Okay, all right. Shoot, okay.
We'll get it done regardless.
February should be a long.
No, actually, I'm wrong.
Let's go.
I was going to say the 28th is the.
I'm absolutely wrong. The second meeting in February is the 28th.
Yes.
The first meeting is the 14th.
Okay, so then we'll have a special meeting.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah, we'll have a special meeting. All right. All right, so any other agenda items coming up? Are we good on this?
I'm just wondering about a report eventually out from you and Tom regarding the work that you've been doing.
Thank you. We're planning to do it on Valentine's Day, on the February 14th meeting.
Great.
We're planning to do that on the first meeting in February, which I believe is weirdly February 14th. Is that true?
You know?
I think it is. Oh, we actually talked about this, so I think it is.
So you're planning to do that on 14th, on 14th of February?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There are a couple more, there's some follow-up with, we're talking about the Declaration of Inclusion.
Right.
Action steps. Nancy's looking at me like, what? And several groups have, either there's, there are things that are in motion or groups wanting to follow up or.
The Energy Committee has, as I understand it, expressed a desire to.
Oh, they should reach out to us then, so that we can talk with them.
I will make sure that they do.
Yeah, yeah, that would be great, because time is short.
They would endure me even now, but I will make sure that they do.
Okay.
And just a reminder, Jeannie, that, first time I heard tonight that they are actually setting up closures of main streets. I'll try to get those dates from the BBC so you folks can technically act to close those streets.
We have to vote on that, don't we? Yeah, okay, I thought so, too.
They don't get to close them on their own.
All right. Boy, we're a fast-moving town. All right. Okay, well, I think that brings us to other business. Tom, do you have any other business? How about you, Jim?
Yeah. I'll tail into Bruce at the end of it. He's going to make an announcement about homelessness tonight. But I did want to note the passing of a North Bennington resident, just a wonderful human being who brought sunshine into every room that she entered. She was just super kind and gentle. And her name was Grace Jurecki, who died at 90 years old. Grace was married to David Jurecki, who was a high school social studies teacher.
Right.
Who I had. But I mark her passing and offer my deepest condolences to the Jurecki family. She was an incredibly good human being.
Thank you, Jim. Jeannie?
Nothing.
Bruce?
Yes, just one quick thing. Given the nature of the temperatures tonight and tomorrow, I did some phone calling around, and I can announce only one thing in, in particular that will be a little helpful for those who are seeking to warm up. And that is Harvest House will be open at 7:00 a.m. tomorrow. That's about an hour earlier than usual. They won't have their coffee made yet by then, but it will be warm. Obviously, if you find other people who are in need, you may call 211. And other than that, I don't have other alternatives for people due to the nature of COVID at the moment and where we are with that. But those, please be on the lookout for others. I will say that places like GIBICs and Homeless Coalition have reached out to the folks they know who might be in need and have worked on plans with them specifically. So there has been work by our agencies out there.
And the only thing that I have to add to that is I spoke to the folks at GIBICs this morning and asked them to prepare, you know, a detailed announcement that would highlight the different things that are available. And to the best of my recollection, the woman that I spoke to said that vouchers are still available, but people would have to call 211. And GIBICs also provides backpacks that include rolled-up mattresses and sleeping bags for those people who just prefer not to go to motel room.
Right.
But, and it's not going to, not to contradict you, Bruce, but I'm going to. The forecast is for like the next six days of sub-zero.
Yes.
Temperatures at night. So, and finally, you know, I don't know how many of these people who are living on the street have phones and might not necessarily be aware of this or even have a television to watch this. So if anybody out there knows of somebody who may need help, maybe you could call for them to try to get them some help.
Yes.
Thank you both. Sarah?
Yeah, I guess I just want to say, if you're not vaccinated, get vaccinated. If you're not boosted, you're eligible, get boosted. It's real, it's out there. The next two, four weeks, as Dr. Dobson said, are critical. If you're immunocompromised, please stay in if you're able to. Do little as you can, as harmful as it is, and make your health.
Thank you, Sarah. All right, and I just wanted to share, Kelly Carroll couldn't be here this evening, but she wanted us to remind everyone that the monthly Willumsack River Walk is this Saturday, January 15th. It'll be at 10 o'clock in the morning. This will be the first anniversary of her daughter Emily's death. And so that she will be remembered during this walk this month. And so it will start at the end of the River Walk by the Bennington Station. And we'll actually, this time, go up North Street, up to School Street, and then back around to the Willumsack apartment. So it'll, it'll be a full circle. But 10 o'clock at, at the end of the River Walk by Bennington Station. All right. All right, so anything else? Or do I have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.